...to order, start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Wyatt, Reister.
Here.
Uh, Sewell?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Um, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. Um, citizens request an oral presentation.
Samuel, yep? Hello, I'm Samuel Kleiss again, here to continue our conversation about the vicious dogs living at 464 Third Street. Today I would like to address a question that was posed to us. Why now? Why did you wait to raise this concern until 11 months after the first incident? The answer to that is simple. We trusted the police and elected officials of Hudson to do their job to the fullest extent and protect our community. When the first incident occurred, we operated under the assumption that it was handled to the best ability of the law. However, as more incidents occurred, you can refer back to our timeline of events from the May 13th meeting, we began to feel as though that was not the case. After Pearl bit a person while off leash at the golf course, we felt as though the reasonable steps were not being taken to keep our community safe. And we began to investigate the city codes to see if there were any place, if there were any in place to address such issues and provide security to not only our household and children, but the community as a whole. We were truly shocked by what we found. Code 5509, a code that clearly and concisely provides law enforcement and the city council a way to ensure that our community does not have to live in fear of vicious dogs. A code that is, that states that it is unlawful for the dogs living at 464 Third Street to be in the city and a code that it would allow them to be removed from the city of Hudson. We were shocked because even though this code is there and all three codes, all three dogs have clearly violated it, the dogs still live next to us despite their multiple recorded vicious incidents as defined in code 5509. To that end, we are also here today to ask you a very direct question. Why is city code 5509 not being applied to these three dogs? And what incident would have to occur for the code to be applied to any dog? If not in the case of dogs biting, biting, and killing, when is code 5509 to be used? When is it acceptable not to enforce the law? We continue to be unwilling to sit by and wait for another incident to occur. We are also unwilling to sit by and continue to be unprotected by you, our elected officials. We would like a direct, public, and open response to our question. Why is city code 5509 not being applied to these three dogs? I did come prepared with comments this time.
Thank you. Dave, did you?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Burns, you okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to inform the council that today we received the Iowa Public Information Board complaint against us that has been filed by Mr. Kleiss. Uh, I will be preparing a draft response to that. We have two weeks to respond to that. The complaint was filed by Mr. Kleiss in June, but for reasons that I do not know and can't explain, the Iowa Public Information Board Executive Director did not give us the complaint until today. So Chrissy and I will be working on a response to that. The, the, public complaints under the Iowa Public Information Board are, are public and open. So that's why I just wanted to, in the open session, let the council know that we received that today and who the individual was that filed the complaint. Again, we'll be drafting a response to it and then the Iowa Public Information Board will then choose to do with that complaint whatever they choose to do. But I thought this was a good opportunity for me to update the council on that issue.
Perfect, thank you. Dave, did you have any comments you wanted to?
No, I didn't have anything.
Okay.
I like to come to the council meetings mostly because it's much more pleasant than the council meetings I used to be at, but...
Stick around long enough, you'll change your opinion.
Yeah, I don't think so. But anyway, I like to come and be informed on what everybody's doing and that's all. That's about my time here.
Okay, alright, thank you. We'll move into committee reports and recommendations. Personnel admin, Lori, from June 24th.
Yeah, so the meeting was called to order at 4:45 PM on June 24th. There was only one item for discussion and this was about a, a new policy for the disposal of city non-real estate property. And this actually came up, um, due to the Greenfield tornado and, uh, they had approached us about wanting to buy one of the squad cars that was on, uh, sale at that time. And, um, we didn't have a policy in place for disposal of property. We do have a policy in place, we did, uh, for purchasing. So we were asked to look at a policy and recommend a policy to the city council. And that policy is on the agenda this evening, correct?
Yes. No, it is not. Um, it will go to, um, wait, is it?
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry, yes, it is. I was thinking of the policy from public safety, I'm sorry. Yeah, it is.
Okay, so that'll be the, the, uh, disposal of city non-real estate property policy. So we are recommending that to the council. Uh, it was a, a motion that carried 3-0, so.
Any questions for Lori?
Does that apply, I'm assuming that applies to fire department as well? Does that need to be listed separately that it's, because they're not really employees?
You know what I mean? I just don't know, maybe we can have Heather look at it before we do anything with it? Uh, or if that needs to be added later, maybe?
Yeah, Heather helped us write, helped, um, Gail and I write it, um, so.
Did you hear my question, Heather?
I did, I did not, Kate, I'm sorry. Can you ask that again?
I asked if it, um, if it applied to fire department because they're pers, they're technically not employees of the city? So do we need to add anything separate for their equipment that is still city-owned property? Or is there anything different with that?
My recollection is that the new policy says decisions are by department heads.
Yes.
But having said that, it wouldn't be a bad idea at all to clarify and name all of the departments that this policy would apply to if that's your desire.
I just thought it was maybe a little bit unclear with them not being, they don't have a department head, they have a fire chief. Um, and maybe that's the person obviously that would approve it.
But it still is probably.
But if it's not the same title.
Well, I guess the other question I have is that they probably have their own set of bylaws, don't they?
Yes.
Yes.
I do.
Yeah. But it's city-owned equipment unless it's owned by the association, but most of the equipment is purchased by association and then donated to the city.
Right, so...
Go ahead.
Again, I think, I think the current policy says that under a certain range, department heads can dispose of property on their own and then if it's a range between another number, then it has to get approved by city council. So, I, I, again, for the sake of clarity, if you wanted to amend it to actually list all of the departments, that wouldn't be a bad idea at all. And when you talk about the vagueness between fire, volunteers, and city, there, um, there is and that continues to be pervasive under Iowa law. They are not employees, but they are covered under our compensation policy. So, and, and again, it's, it's city money, it's taxpayer dollars. So I, I, I think it would be an excellent idea to include that in the policy if you want to list all of the departments that could potentially, potentially have, um, items that they own that would be disposed of. You see what I'm saying?
So do you feel that we should go ahead and table this tonight until we get that clarification? Or go ahead and move ahead with it and then?
No, I think you could, if, if the council agrees, I think you could approve it with an addition to clarify all of the departments it's applicable to in the policy.
Okay.
And that's just a simple line that says, you know, this policy applies to the following departments. Fire department, police department, et cetera, and list them all.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, just wanted some clarification on that before we passed it.
Yep, no, it's a great question, Kate, thank you.
Alright, any other questions for Lori? Correct, we're not really there yet.
Are we moving something? What are we doing?
So, okay, we'll move on to public safety meeting then, June 27th. Kate?
We met June 27th at, I don't know, like 4 o'clock, I think, yeah, 4 PM is what it says here. The speaking of city equipment, the gator that was previously used by the fire department has now been transferred to the police department because they have updated some equipment with the fire department, so they would no longer use that piece. So now the police department is going to be able to use that, as well as a sharing situation with Public Works.
We haven't seen it for almost two weeks, Public Works.
Public Works stole it. No, I'm just kidding, they did not, they are just using it.
Yep.
Um, da-da-da-da. We also talked about some training compliance with, um, needs yearly, continuing education needs, that's the word I was looking for. Right now, we currently do all of our training with Black Hawk County as do some other jurisdictions. We pay them $500 per year, per, not, not per member, just $500 flat per year. Um, and we, but what we do then is have to send our employees to their trainings that occur at certain times, which we have to adjust for shift differentials, things like that. And it's based upon whatever training they are giving at the time. A lot of times will, um, uh, pertain to jail policies and, and different things that may not actually apply to us. So, um, Chief Banks is looking into a different training, um, team and diff, program that would cost $150 per officer per year, but it would, as long as it's still certified, it could get us better topics to be able to train our officers on that would apply to their jobs here, so that they can maybe get a little bit more out of the continuing education. It might be a few hundred dollars more per year, but, um, it could be in different items that will contribute more to what they do. So, future information to come on that, uh, making sure that it's certified and everything else that we need. Um, the next thing we talked about is certification raises for police officers. And we did discuss this briefly at the last council meeting. Um, union contract deals with some, with increases and, and things like that. But these are, are raises for additional training that is above and beyond the general requirements. We did talk about how these certifications, cert, certifications, that was a weird word, um, actually can save the, the community, the taxpayers' money here. One such example was being the TASER teacher certified instructor.
TASER instructor certification.
TASER instructor certified, which we now have two certified TASER instructors, one being Chief Banks and one off, um, officer, Husitic.
Husitic.
Husitic. Previously, we would have had to pay for our team to all go out and be TASER certified, which now we have two in-house instructors, so that'll save us the cost of doing some of those things. Therefore, we did, you know, agree with some of the certification raises. Uh, what we did ask though is that there's not a whole lot of teeth in this as far as making sure that certifications are approved prior to taking those courses. So we asked this to go to the personnel committee so that we could get a policy put in place that any certification recommendation or request would have to come to council to be approved to take and then the raise be given rather than somebody taking a course and then it coming to us saying we now would owe them even though if it, if we didn't agree with it, they've now wasted their time to take that certification. So trying to switch that around and do some preapproval for those prior to that. So that has gone to personnel, correct Chrissy?
No, it, it...
Will be on this month.
No, it just, it came back here.
To put the...
The, the policy hasn't gone anywhere yet, that goes to personnel.
Yeah, that's what she was asking.
Yeah, sorry, yes.
Too many things going on, I get it, okay.
Too many things going on in my brain.
So yes, that is going to go to personnel so that they can discuss putting it into the policy handbook so that it, we get approvals for those before, um, any employees take those. Um, and then we talked about Sergeant Wiersma and Chief Banks have submitted our application for automatic traffic enforcement back on June 27th. That had to be in by a certain date like July 1st. Um, and they have until October to decide if we're going to get that.
October 1st, yep.
Um, so no one really knows what the DOT is doing with those and hopefully we'll find out sooner rather than later. So this is based on the new law about... Correct, yep, so, um, there had to be some, and there was some, some discussion too, I know, as well as what information went into that application. So those are, there are copies of that if anybody really wants to look at it. Transmission squad pickup needs to be replaced and a bill will come before the city council in the future. We adjourned at 4:50 PM.
Any questions for Kate? Thank you. Alright, no public hearings, so we'll move into, uh, general government. We'll move into item A, discussion action to approve resolution 3245, a resolution for approval of road closure for Amets Riders Event.
So moved.
Okay, second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Uh, Reister?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Okay, item B, discussion action to approve resolution 3246, a resolution for approval of road closures for the federal pub event.
So moved.
Discussion? Roll call.
Uh, Sewell?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Alright, uh, motion carries 5-0.
Okay, item C, discussion action to approve resolution 3247, a resolution for approval of wage adjustment for the city of Hudson Police Officer, Hudson, Iowa.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second with a question.
Yep, discussion.
Uh, so is this related to this, this discussion we just had?
So I think we decided to approve this or recommend this while at the same time recommending that a policy be put in place to clarify this process in the future.
Yeah, and that it's above and beyond their normal requirements.
And this one happens to be the field training officer and the TASER instructor, which allows, like I said, that was the one example I used, that we don't have to pay for a TASER instructor to come out. So it does end up saving the taxpayers some money on that end, so that's why we said okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Alright, Wyatt?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Uh, Lawson?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries 5-0.
Okay, item D, discussion action to approve resolution 3248, a resolution for approval of payment request number four regarding the city hall community center update project. And this would be in the amount of $96,719.73.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Uh, Lawson?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Alright, well...
No, the link on this was the wrong one.
Yeah.
Oh, it was, oh, I'm sorry.
But that's okay, I was like, wait a minute, I just saw that one.
Okay, um, motion carries 5-0.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Um, item E, discussion action to approve resolution 3249, a resolution to approve disposal of city non-real estate property policy. And that's what we were talking about before, and so this would be, um, then with the addition of the listed departments as Heather suggested.
I think that motion that we approve it amended with the listed department heads that can make those decisions.
I'll second it. Can you, just for everybody's sake, go through kind of the broad strokes of what that is?
Yeah, it just, um, we didn't have any policy we had to acquire, um, but so, um, the department head would generally be responsible for providing for the disposal of such an item. So if, um, the budgeted items of less than $3,000 in value may be sold in one manner listed, um, above, there's a couple of different ways it can be sold. Items between $3,000 and $10,000 may be sold with approval of the city administrator and the department director. And then items more than $10,000 then would require a city council approval. And so, um, items could come up for sale as to whether they're going to trade the item, advertise it locally, conduct a public auction or sale, or list items on the govdeals.com or, or similar auction site.
So, um...
And it does also solve for the emergency situation.
Right.
That we have with Greenfield because the mayor has the right to approve the disposal up to $5,000 in value in case of an emergency. So that, that would have, had this, that would have answered that question that we had. Although I would say, I would say that, that, that particular situation, we only had one bid on that anyway and they weren't the actual highest bidder anyhow, so.
We actually didn't have any bids on that car that we sold to Greenfield. It was on the other one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, the other one.
Yeah, the other one had the bid.
I had a citizen reach out to me, which Heather, you remember I emailed you about that? That Greenfield one, remember a few weeks ago? You'll remember as I talk about it, you'll remember.
Okay.
So, um, I had a citizen reach out and I think, it, correct me if I'm wrong on this, the, the bid or the, the opening bid or something for that cop car, it was a cop car?
Mm-hmm.
And it was at $2,500 bucks, is that right?
Yeah.
And, and then we gave it to Greenfield and I had somebody ask me about what were the mechanics behind that? And then I emailed Heather to get some background and, and you kind of shared with me it was kind of an emergency thing, blah blah blah, the mayor has the opportunity to do that. So I shared that with this person and the person pointed out, which I think this is a fair point, that, um, anytime something's up for auction, like a lot of times, there's no bids until the very end of the auction. I buy stuff on auction all the time, like govdeals or on eBay or something like that. And so, I guess my question is, how do we determine the value if, uh, 'cause, 'cause that, that car, I would guess, is certainly worth more than $2,500, which is what the opening, was that the opening bid? I don't know.
The minimum bid.
Minimum.
The minimum bid. So I'm, I'm sure at the minimum bid, and then I don't know how many days were left in that auction when we decided to give it to Greenfield, but the auction wasn't complete yet, right?
Correct, there was like, there...
I thought we did it on Facebook. Did we do it on Facebook or did we do an auction?
No, it was Facebook.
It was Facebook.
Facebook and we advertised it in the newspaper.
Like on, uh...
This isn't like on a...
How do you do it, so it was for sale for $2,500?
Well, it was a sealed bid process, so we advertised it as a sealed bid with a minimum, a minimum bid of $2,500.
And so when was that sealed bid process complete and when in that process did we give it to Greenfield?
There were...
No, we, we did not give it to Green, they paid the $2,500.
Okay, $2,500.
Yeah, um, there were not very many days left in the, in the auction or in the, in the, the bid process.
The key thing, there was no bids, so we just closed the auction, is how I took it.
We closed the, like, we, we took it off, it wasn't really an auction again, it was a Facebook post. So it was, we have this, does anybody want to buy it? And it sat out there with no nibbles until the Greenfield thing happened and they called in a panic and we had a nibble. As far as the pricing goes, I assumed that Chief Banks had priced it based upon what he knew was the going rate for a car of that nature in the law enforcement community. You know, uh, for stuff like that, it's pretty hard to figure out, you know, what a used car is going to go for, obviously, because sometimes it hits somebody's buttons, but sometimes it doesn't. So, am I wrong about that, Chief Banks? Did you kind of, you had a general range of what you thought that particular car was worth, is that fair?
That's fair, I took it to Caldwell's and they, that's what they told me that...
That's what they would have given you for trade?
Yeah.
So there was, what year was it and how many miles, Ron?
2017 and Jamal, correct me, it was 183,000?
Yes.
And it was an Explorer?
Yes.
For, there's no way that's worth only $2,500 bucks. And, and so the, the question from the citizen was this. And, and it's my question for this policy. If under a certain amount, $3,000 for, for example, the department heads can liquidate, am I understanding that right? The department heads can just decide what happens to it under $3,000 and between 3 and whatever it can do this and from what, over $10,000 we have to do this. The, the citizen who reached out to me, and I agree with him when they explained to me their perspective, said there's no chance that thing was worth only $2,500. And so, how do we prevent a situation where we artificially diminish the value of, of a piece of property so that it falls under the $3,000 threshold so that the department head can just do with it what they want? Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me because my question is going to be...
Kelly Blue Book, there is no chance Kelly Blue Book would be $2,500 on a 2017 Explorer with 185, 185,000?
Yeah, but you gotta, you gotta put in the, the engine time, the wear and tear on it too. That car was nickel and dime on us since I've been here.
That's fair, but, and, and whatever Caldwell told you, I don't know that, Caldwell might have told you what they would give for it. But the person's response to me was, I didn't, I didn't know about it, but if I would have known I could buy that vehicle for $2,500, I would have done it in a heartbeat.
And it was out there. Shame on the citizen for not realizing that. But I mean, it was listed at $2,500 bucks, so from day one until we disposed of it, everybody had an opportunity to buy it.
I'm, yeah, I think my question is, um...
I understand your question, how do we make sure?
Is it, if it's an auction and that's the minimum price, that's one thing.
Right.
If it's for sale for $2,500 bucks, that's another thing. And how did we determine the value at $2,500?
That was going to be my question too, because you get, and I'm throwing this out just because we talked about it this weekend, like a, a blacktop roller that, you know, flattens out streets. Okay, what's the value of that? Is it $500 or is it $3,000 or $5,000 because we really don't know the value of it, it's what somebody's going, worth paying for it. But how do you set that? Is it what it could be replaced for? Is it what could be, you know, who sets the value, I guess, is my question. If it's a chainsaw we're talking about, obviously it's going to be under $3,000. But when we're talking vehicles, there could be a very big difference between $3,000 and $10,000 and how we set that up.
But I think with him going to, you know, when Chief Banks went to Bill and got a price, I would, I would think that'd be a fair market price. You know, I don't know if that was a trade-in or fair market, but I mean, you would hope the price that we would get back from the dealer, whether it's a car, truck, whatever it could be, um, hopefully that's what we can use.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I, I've traded cars in before and they'll give you nearly the fair, I mean, I could sell a car privately for way more than I can trade a car for. And, and all I'm trying to prevent us from doing is setting this up so that we can, and I, 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 you know, Heather, when, and when Heather explained to me why we did what we did with Greenfield, okay, fine, that's great, you know, whatever. I'm just saying in the future, it, so I would say this, if it's an auction, then don't mess with pulling the auction and giving, giving it away at a cheaper price until the auction's over.
If it's an auction.
If it's an auction.
Right.
And if it's, and if it's just for sale.
We wouldn't have handled it this way.
If it's an auction, we would have been contractually bound with that, we wouldn't have been able to do what we did in this case.
Right, okay.
So Matt, do you think, sorry, Heather, go ahead.
No, I, I was just going to say, I, when you auction, you're, you're, you're stuck with the terms that the auctioneer has laid out. I, I, sometimes you can pull an item from an auction, but I, in, in this case, I don't think we would have been able to do that. The only reason why we were able to do it is because it was just sitting out there on Facebook and it wasn't a true auction, it was simply just an item for sale. If you...
Well, hang on, can I stop here?
If you, if you want to add another layer of supervision to this, you can do that. It's just another layer of supervision. I mean, I, you know, the thought process was to not burden, obviously, the, not, not burden too much the disposal of items that are, but, but I understand your question. The question is, what if there's not, what if the listed value isn't accurate? What if a department head has listed a minimum bid too low or not gotten adequate backup for what the property's really worth? The only way you could do that would be to add another layer to this policy which, so for items between $3,000 and $10,000, you know, you'd have to, or maybe you'd, maybe you'd say anything more than, yeah, I don't know, it's up to you, whatever you want to do, but you'd add another line that would say that, you know, the department head would have to review, um, I don't know, three sources for verification of a proper bid price or something?
I, I never actually saw the post. And, but, so if, it was a sealed bid process?
Yeah, there wasn't a, it wasn't just a Facebook, here's for sale, it was a sealed, sealed bid auction process.
So a sealed bid process would have an, an end date, right? And then, and so I, I guess my contention in that case is, if we said this is for sale and you can turn in a sealed bid process, I'm in the middle of a situation, I've got a meeting right after this one where there's a sealed bid process for a piece of property and, and the bid's going to get turned in 10 minutes before the deadline.
Right.
Because the people interested in the property don't want anyone to know that they're interested in the property until the very last second, and that's pretty common. And so I don't, I, I, I'm not making a big deal about a $2,500 or a $5,000 car. I'm just saying if we're going to do this policy, let's make sure that we do it in a way that doesn't lend itself to the same issue.
Yeah, so you're looking ahead to the future, you're not saying the way...
Matt, do you think that, okay, we'll use the police cars for example, does that need to go back to public safety, back to Kate? Back to Kate at subcommittee, you know, Chief Banks presents his car up for auction. Does Kate need to approve that from her subcommittee or Public Works for us on our loader truck or something?
I don't like that. I don't think that's a bad deal. I think it just gets another layer of, hey, we're going to sell this.
I mean, at least then, somebody on this quarter table here has had their.
And I'm not picking on, on Banks or the police department, but this is going to be a thing with Public Works. This is going to be a thing maybe with the fire department. Uh, and, and if we've already got, I, it's just one guy that reached out to me, but if we, we already have people's, you know, kind of sniffing this out going, wait a minute, this smells a little fishy.
Well, I also like the fact if it goes to committee, it's also in the minutes for that committee that then can go out and be in the public eye a little bit.
So, would you like to see this policy go back then to committee and?
I, I would. At least if we were in unison about presenting to the subcommittees, I think, yeah, let's put it back and bring it back forward.
Yes, sir?
Here's, here's a question. Um, so, going forward, you know, with our car rotation, our cars will be a lot more, have more value to it, because they'll be getting at a lower mileage. So, thinking ahead, do we, because we have our cars from Carwell, do we go there and get the trade-in value? Or do we go to bid?
So, if you, I can answer, what, what we had seen in the past, my past, was they would go get a trade-in value. They would put it on a sealed bid. If that bid was not reached of that value, then it got traded in. If it was above, then, of course, they accepted the bid and had more equity going against the new piece.
A bet, above or met, right?
Above or met, right.
So, maybe we need to incorporate some of that into this too.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think as we're looking on our, you've got that plan laid out, Kate, where we're, we're now into it. Right. The rotation makes sense to trade it in, because we've got some value.
Exactly. That's kind of what we were trying to get to.
Yeah, where in the past, I don't know that we had a lot of value.
And we're going to get to value that's going to be over that ten thousand dollar mark, hopefully. Knock on wood that it's still going to have to come back and be approved before we do it anyway. But I do like the, back to committee, just to put that other layer of somebody else's eyes on it.
So, do we need to vote down the motion on the table?
Uh, no.
And send it back?
No, we can, well, we can table it. Right?
Okay, there's, there was already, what are you, I'm trying to catch with what you're trying to do. Do you want to send it back to committee for them to tweak the policy a little more? Is that what you want to do?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So, a yes?
Yes.
Is that what I mean? Okay. Um, there's already a motion and a second. So, you can call the question, and if it fails to pass, then that motion fails, and the item is still there, and then somebody can move to table it, go back to committee.
Can they, or can they just table it right now?
I, uh, you only had a motion and a second.
We'll have to vote no on the motion.
Okay, well, we'll just move ahead then with that, and then, okay.
Go back to committee.
Yeah, I think you can call the, I think you can call the question, and once you call the question, and your roll call, if it fails, then somebody can make a motion to send it back to committee after that.
This Robert guy that came up with all these rules.
I know.
So, any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Uh, Wyatt.
So, I'm saying no? No.
Okay, Reister.
So confused.
Uh, Lawson.
No.
Cook.
No.
Uh, Sewell.
No.
All right, so, motion has failed.
So, I move that we table this, uh, or send it back to committee, whatever I need to say.
Yep.
Yep.
Good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Oh, ma'am.
Okay. Um, roll call.
Uh, Reister.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Uh, Cook.
Aye.
Sewell.
Aye.
All right, so that motion carried five-zero, and it will go back to Personnel Admin.
Okay. All right. Item F, um, discussion action to approve resolution three-two-five-zero, a resolution setting public hearing for amending the code of ordinances of the city of Hudson, Iowa, and ordinance amending Hudson Municipal Code sixty-one Traffic Control Devices, amending, uh, section sixty-one oh six, Automatic Traffic Enforcement, paragraph seven, fines. And that has to do with changing it from, um, eleven to twenty miles an hour, rather than the ten to twenty, since it's mandated.
Well, it's just a defined amount that's required under the code too.
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Uh, Wyatt.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Uh, Cook.
Aye.
Sewell.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
All right, motion carries five-zero.
And this is just to set the public.
Yep, correct, correct.
Um, there are informational items, seven informational items in there, reminder items. Um, Public Works Committee, July tenth, Mayor's Task Force, canceled. Personnel Admin, July twenty-second, Public Safety, July twenty-fifth. Next council meetings will be, um, July twenty-second and August twenty-sixth.
No, it's, it should be the twelfth, sorry.
August twelfth.
I don't know what happened. I looked at that today, and I was like, that's not right. Sorry.
We all had vacation.
Do I have a second for adjournment?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Again, I'd like to say, can I say no to adjournment?
You can, maybe you won't.